Good evening. Welcome to the September 25th work session that Dr. Lynch asked us to hold. On behalf of the Limbrook Board of Education, I appreciate you all coming out here today. If we could begin with a salute to the flag. Pat, you can either sing it or just lead us in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Lynch, if you could please let us know about this Blue Ribbon Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belmont. So tonight is a work session of the Board of Education. So probably our most famous work session happens in March, and that's when we do a budget work session. The reason why I thought it important to have a work session tonight before we begin the budgeting process is if you can all remember, get into a time machine of, we predicted that a fiscal cliff was coming at the end of COVID. And a fiscal cliff was coming not only because federal monies were disappearing, but also because historic increases in foundation aid were disappearing. So that is to set the stage for a very different type of budgeting conversation that we need to have this year. We hope that things will come out well, but I think it's our duty to apprise the board. Mr. Press and I have been talking, you know, red lights aren't flashing, but clearly a yellow light is. And I think it's our responsibility to bring that to your attention, put it out there, start to talk about some options so that we're not doing it in the heat of the moment in March. So that's the original reason we called for the meeting. And the second one is Dr. Bilekis and I were at a meeting last week where the state started to unfold its plan for the complete re-envisioning of education in the state of New York. I think some people who were in attendance were a little surprised at how far it goes. And I think therefore, we have again a responsibility to notify this board, I won't say it in the same dramatic language, but maybe I will, that a yellow light is flashing. And we need to have some conversation both on the curriculum side of the House and on the fiscal side of the House. So I've asked Dr. Bilekis to do the work on the curriculum side and Mr. Press on the fiscal side, and then we'll have a nice discussion. Dr. Bilekis.
If we don't mind if we could advance the first slide. Oh, I got this. Perfect. No, it's not working. Try again. There we go. All right. Sorry about the delay there. So as Dr. Lynch said, we did attend the workshop from the state where they gave us a preview of what is to come. They're still at a point where they're taking public comments, so this is one of the other reasons why we want to bring this up tonight. If anybody wants to comment on the Blue Ribbon Commission, comments are open until October 7th. So the final comments can be put in at that time. So if you Google search NYSCD Blue Ribbon Commission, you can find information. And like I said, there's an opportunity to comment on some of the things that we're going to be talking about tonight. Right now, in the state of New York, there are three different types of diplomas that you can obtain. So there is your typical Regents diploma, there is a diploma with advanced distinction, and the third type is called a local diploma. Each one of those diplomas has their own qualifications on them, and unfortunately, one does not allow you to attend college necessarily. So what they're doing is they're replacing all three and saying, everybody gets a diploma. It's going to be called the high school diploma. And the extras that you do on top of your diploma will become endorsements and seals. So there will be opportunities for those that want to enrich their diploma to have them, but it will still be that same base document for all. The second piece here in the current model versus the transformational model is that right now, technically, I know people see their report card as one item or their transcript as one item. When you're graduating high school in the state of New York, there's really two separate things going on at the same time. You're trying to accumulate your 22 credits, which is the coursework you need in order to graduate from New York State, but you're also trying to finish what they call a four-plus-one pathway, which means that you're taking your Regents exams in addition to obtaining credits. An only way to graduate is to pass those Regents exams and/or a pathway. So that's how you graduate in the state of New York. The new system here says, there are a lot of standards out there, and you need to cover the standards. They don't have to be X number of credits in math, X number of credits in science anymore. It will be these many credits in STEM. So there's going to be some flexibility for kids, and you don't necessarily have to pass your Regents exams. They're not going away. That's one of your options to show that you're meeting the standards, but there could be project-based learning and different curriculum opportunities. And actually, as Dr. Lynch said, what does that mean? We have a little bit more local control, but then we have to pay for any of the curriculum adjustments or any of these opportunities. If we expand, they do have financial impact, and that's why we thought it was important to put that out there tonight. So there is a lot of work to be done, but we don't know exactly what that is yet. I think we'll have a more comprehensive presentation later in the year, once the panel comes out. Right now, they're targeting the recommendation sometime in November. We'll see what that actually turns out to be and how quickly we can get that information together, but we will give an update once that's available.
Will you say this?
Yes.
Because it sounds to me like the dumbing down of our kids, but maybe the teachers on the board will make you feel better. So when they talk about having project-based STEM requirements, and you say local control, which we ask for, will that be local control that then has to be approved by the Education Department? Or they will come out with a criteria that you have to fit within that? But either way, whatever you do locally will have to be approved by the state before we make it part of the graduation requirements?
Well, what we're hearing right now is there is going to be some type of statewide rubric. Who gets to judge the validity of what you're doing against that rubric, whether it's us or them? We haven't received all those details yet. We also have not received a timeline, which I think is probably the most interesting thing from our perspective, is how long do we have to get ready for this? When is this going to come into effect? Is it going to affect any of what I'll call our current cohorts, meaning the kids that are in high school right now? Or is it going to affect our kids in the middle school or affect our kids in the elementary school? We don't know when they're even starting this. So there's a lot of details that still need to be had, but there is going to be a lot of prep work. Once this, you know, comes to fruition, we're going to need to get ready for it. And anytime you're getting ready for something, obviously, it does have a cost involved.
Right, but not only that, but based on the history we've had with the state, it's going to be a cluster when they send it to us for it to work initially. There's no way that's going to be a smooth rollout, whether they start in sixth grade, ninth grade, or 11th grade. That first or two years is going to be a difficult one. So obviously, you'll have enough advanced notice on that rubric. The real issue being, I mean, what's great about it is what we've always asked for, creativity. Let our teachers and staff and our community create, hey, we don't need to have this ridiculously obtrusive math program. We can have something else that really teaches the kids and has real-life purposes and do that. But then the issue will be, how do we get that approved? And what's that process going to be? And then the question is, how far down do we go? Like you said, is it going to go down to elementary school? We have no idea how early that'll start.
Well, I don't think it's going to go down to the elementary school. What I meant is, I don't know if they're going to start with the kids that are currently elementary age or which cohort it's going to be that it affects.
I'm happy.
I was just seeing Mrs. Dino look like she has a question.
No, I mean, from things that I've heard, I didn't think it was going to affect any of the current high school students, but I mean, those are just buzzings that I've heard.
That's what we've heard as well, but again, nothing definitive.
And also, I mean, the way looking at it, like, it gives you more autonomy, as Mr. Belmont said, to cater programs that are more creative, and we can work on really mastery of programs, not just teaching to test, which is wonderful. And we can look at possibly some of the mandates that we have to cover at younger grades and then exposing our children to different things, which of course comes with a price tag, but, you know, it'll just give us more choice, hopefully.
Yes, there's definitely some flexibility here that we haven't seen, sorry.
And then the problem's going to be, you're going to have home schools that want the kids to go to college, they're going to say, okay, build a log cabin, and now you've got 101 average in math, and someone else is going to have a more rigorous curriculum. So the issue will be, being that the standards and the rubric will now be down at the local level, I have no idea how you're going to standardize that for those kids that are going off to college. How are you going to have any sense of that for the kids that are going for post-high school education?
It will also give you the opportunity to bring in different things and partner with universities and things that we haven't been able to do before.
I love the creativity of it, but my concern will be how for those kids, you know, it's not going to be our problem, it'd be the college's problem. Right now, they have a way of measuring, saying a kid from Limbrook or a kid from, you know, Port Washington or wherever else you wanted to say, or from Albany, there's at least some standard now to do it. But if you have a rubric, I don't know how they're going to measure. We're going to be so concerned with making sure we teach our kids real-life applications of what they're learning so they can benefit from that and be interested in education, at the same time saying, hey, for that kid that wants to get off to a competitive college, you know, there'll be a totally new landscape when trying to figure out how to do that for our guidance department and how to prepare our kids for that also, so.
There's going to be a lot of things that change, for sure, but we are using other courses right now that do not have Regents exams.
Right.
So we have a practice for doing that. If the state is standardizing them too, which again, we'll see what their end game is, you know, it isn't like we haven't done this before where there's no state assessment. That also doesn't mean, though, that the majority of kids are not going to sit for state assessments. There's probably a very large part of our population that will still sit for the state assessments because, like you said, they want to show that they are the best and the brightest to the most competitive colleges.
Will this impact honors and AP classes or no?
I'm sorry?
How will this impact honors and AP classes?
Again, I think we're still awaiting details, but, you know, I don't think, again, it depends on the grade level too. Because there are certain AP classes right now that sit for both an AP and a Regents. But that AP exam would show that they've mastered the material or the standards that needed to be covered. So I do think that they are going to defer to some of those called tried and true external standards. But, you know, again, until we get the details, I think that's where we're going to get lost.
And they were more focused, this whole revamping in their minds was really more focused on the Regents and, no, not, I don't think that, I didn't mean.
I think that might have been where the conversation started, but it's definitely not where it ended.
Right.
And I think in terms of assessing kids, like at the college level, like you're saying, Dr. Bilekis referenced some of these tried and true methods, right? We've seen already that a lot of the colleges are now reinstituting some of these standardized tests. The SATs and ACTs are starting to make a comeback at some of the upper-tier schools because the professors are saying exactly that, that how do we compare two kids? We're getting these kids who are test-blind or test-optional, and we're finding that these kids aren't quite as good as their 105 GPA says they are, right? Because of the grade inflation and things like that. So I think schools will come up with ways to assess kids and standardize it across, right? The fact that it's, that this problem exists, there'll be new creative ways to deal with it, but I think on balance, it will give our teachers some creativity and ability to kind of flex to the needs of the kids. Probably long-term going to be a good thing, just, but like you said, it'll be a cluster for a couple of years.
Yeah, there's definitely going to be an adjustment period. And I also think, you know, to keep our kids competitive, and you've seen this in Limbrook High School over the last few years too, and I know Mrs. Dino mentioned this a few minutes ago, you know, we are always looking at college partnerships and expanding and trying to make sure that the kids are ready for collegiate work. Why? Because they started the collegiate work here. And that is something that I think has been a great thing in Limbrook, and we have several universities that we're partnering with in addition to the AP program and such. I do think there are a lot of great opportunities, and we'll continue to look at and expand in that direction, to keep our kids looking in that best light as their Judge Buddy external world. The, oh, sorry.
No, two things that I think positive from this. Like a student who had, let's say, a 94 average in a class like geometry and then failed a Regents, no longer would fail that class. I mean, there could be some alternative final assessment, but I think that's a real positive from this, right?
I think it definitely helps some kids, and look, you know, there's all different reasons you fail the assessment, and some people think it's because they didn't necessarily have a full grasp of the material, but it could be just that they're a highly anxious child and put in that pressure situation.
Or they were sick for that one day or something, right?
Absolutely, and they did throw out different opportunities of, look, they may have had a tragedy in their family that week. You know, there's all different reasons, and unfortunately, with a Regents exam, it's not like you can take it again tomorrow or next week. You have to wait a whole, you know, couple of months in between at a minimum before you can sit for the exam again. So there's all these different factors about the current system.
And I also think this might allow some students to pursue some passions that they might not have otherwise explored, being stuck in a path that they were in prior.
Absolutely, and they might be able to show their talents in different ways so that, you know, the kid that's a little bit more creative and artistic actually might be able to use those talents in their work in math and science and, you know, vice versa. So I do think there's a lot of different possibilities for children to show that they've mastered what they need in order to say that they've completed their high school education.
Yeah, I just, I know that we've been talking a lot about the students, and some of my colleagues are concerned about how we compare for competitiveness for colleges. What I see here, though, is an opportunity, like a real legitimate opportunity for students to graduate high school and go right into a productive career path, rather than feeling that the only way to be successful in high school is to be on the college path. You know, I was at a workshop recently, and it was, one of the facts that was shared, which blew my mind, was just the number of companies, including really high-end, Google, IBM, Apple, that are actually eliminating the baccalaureate, you know, bachelor's degree requirements for some of their jobs, including high-paying jobs, as long as those people are coming in with the right preparation, the right background, you know, things like certificates and endorsements and, you know, graduating high school, let's say, with, you know, your Google certification or with a pilot's license or something like that, you know, you can go right into the workforce because you haven't been compelled to take this kind of contrived college pathway. And so like, I'm excited about that, but it's also going to be a lot of work. I mean, we're talking about completely re-imagining high school, which is going to be a challenge for the teachers and for their leadership to make happen, and I'm excited about it, but I'm also really worried about it.
It is very different than what we've seen, and you know, as, you know, Mr. Murray was saying, this whole idea of micro-credentialing is what they were referring to, and you could start the micro-credentialing here, and, you know, certain companies, they have you move up the ranks by stacking your micro-credentials. So you start with a base level and you work your way up, and they were saying it was crazy, and, you know, Mr. Murray was sitting there with us, and there were people that were flying up the ranks in big companies like Google that were starting at 60,000 to 80,000, and eight weeks' worth of training later could be in the 200,000 range. And it's insanity to us that sat through four years of college that it is that easy, but they're really looking for people that are qualified and able to do the job and trying to make ourselves, you know, producers of free thinkers that can step into these kind of roles and be successful.
Well, one of the other key pieces of that, and I think this is where it's going to be the real challenge as things change, is the workforce that our children are going to eventually graduate into, especially the kids who are just over with Ms. Postman in the KC now, is going to be completely, we won't even be able to, we can't even conceive of what that's going to look like. There's just no way for us to do that. And so the most important thing for us to do is to create learners, because these children, when they graduate, are going to have to be able to skill, reskill, upskill, and that's a learner. And it's not going to be what they know, it's going to be how they learn new things that's most important, which I think freeing us from some of these graduation requirements is great, but it also, again, puts a lot of pressure on our teachers to change how they teach to be about the learning and not the material.
And I have to say, I give our community a lot of credit here. So the findings that, you know, Dr. Lynch had mentioned last time from the profile of the OWL do talk a lot about the skills that, you know, we project are going to be needed by those kids that are currently in kindergarten, and it didn't necessarily tie to specific academic content, but, you know, being able to critically analyze information and, you know, some of the collaborative requirements that are going to be out there, and no matter how the world moves, there are certain communication skills that are not going to disappear. And like, you know, different things like that, so I do think that there are a lot of universal things that did come out of that process, which was great.
Dr. Bilekis, I had a few questions too, if I may. As you said, it's a radical shift in the expectations for the high school student and the teachers, as well as the leadership, the administration. Is there any suggested timeframe for the rollout? I realize like, public comments end October 7th, but when do they think they would implement?
We wish we had that answer. We did ask, and unfortunately, the answer was that the State Department typically rolls out with a cohort, and that cohort isn't typically in the high school yet. So that was the very vague response that we received. We're hoping that in November we have.
If I could actually just add to that, because I'm breaking news, so I was with the Commissioner yesterday. So she addressed the state superintendents. The one expectation she has at the November Board of Regents meeting, they will talk more specifically about timelines. So I think that is one of the agenda items on the November meeting, so I thought that was really.
And then did they also mention if we're suggesting local control and a statewide rubric? Is there any suggestion of auditing that, that we avoid a pay-to-play situation? Where, to what Mr. Belmont said, how do we ensure that students are participating in rigorous learning? That it's not, you know, if there's not a broadspan assessment, if there's not a standardized way to judge the students and their performance, how do we ensure that, you know, that our children do stack up for those who do want to go on to college or even in a profession? Is there any talk of an audit being put into play or?
I haven't heard of that yet. I don't know if you heard anything from the Commissioner.
But you know, I think that is one of the reasons why we are meeting tonight. I think that's an important, public comment is open now. So I think when I heard the Commissioner speak on this quite eloquently, I mean, when you hear her lay out this vision, the current structure that this high school was created under is the 1904 model of compulsory education that got kids out of underage labor. That's what invented the current system with seat time. Is that an adequate education for 2036, when our littlest OWLs, 2037, when our littlest OWLs graduate? So she would say that it all begins with the profile of the graduate, which is what they're looking at statewide and what we have looked at locally this year, and with which we are using to inform our professional development. Those are the skills, the mindsets, and the traits that the learners must possess out the door. Once you get into some of this detail, that's where I have my concerns. I think philosophically, I don't know if anyone can disagree with what has been laid out, that we all kind of know. We heard it from our community, we just heard it from our findings of Malloy. We need critical thinkers, we need problem solvers, we need kids who can emotionally self-regulate, we need kids with communication skills, especially high-end writing, and we need people who are not addicted to their screens and are able to relate to other human beings. That's what we're going to be told at the October Board meeting. How do we get there? Lot of devil in the details. So the open, so Mr. Sarosi is going to actually be going through this with his faculty on October 7th, which is kind of amazing, and we hope to have those QR codes distributed with our teachers so that they can, this is what the state's asking for. Now is the time, you know, we're all, you know, after they impose something on us, it's like, oh, wow, that was a really stupid idea. The comment period is open. My personal opinion is, it hasn't been widely disseminated, so I have to say, I've never heard of this before. Dr. Bilekis, you've never? My performance at, Mr. Murray, you were there, it was a command performance. Every Nassau County superintendent was required to be at this meeting. And one of the meetings was so that we could bring it back to our boards and our communities to say, hey, we need, you need to start talking about this. So the devil's in the details, and I think that's the key.
And two more questions, if I may. Did they speak about safeguards in place for our special education students to obtain their high school diplomas?
Well, I think that the reason, well, one of the reasons that they're doing this is that they want to be able to replace that local diploma, because the local diploma sometimes was limiting for our special education students. So if everyone graduates with a high school diploma, it will give them that opportunity to possibly find a better job, attend a college. There are many colleges now that obviously are changing the way that they deliver their instruction to help students with special needs. So there should be more opportunities for those students, and I think that, you know, because there's a lot of local control here, there will be different pathways that we can create that can help those students be a little bit more successful. But again, you know, we're speculating a lot because the details have not been shared.
But that's one of the things I personally am passionate and most excited about. We all, we sit in a conference room every year, and we look at the children who we consider at risk of not graduating. And there are times we'll have a kid sit two, three, four times for a Regents exam. We know they know what they're doing. We know we know what they're talking about, they're just not able to get over that hurdle. Where if we could say, but you know what? That kid has successfully worked in the OWL store for an entire year and demonstrated competency, that would be really nice to do for kids.
Thank you.
I just have one question. Are other states engaging in similar re-imaginations of the high school curriculum? They are.
Yeah, there's conversations throughout the country, and I think, again, the idea of the profile of a graduate has become a very big driving force, because people are realizing that the kids leaving high school right now are not necessarily prepared for what comes next.
One of the phrases that I heard at that same conference workshop, which I really liked, was changing, you know, we've been talking about CCR for years now, college-career-ready, and college came first. And the shift that some states are making, I know North Carolina for sure, I'm not sure where else, is graduating career-ready and college if applicable, because that's really our job. Our job is to make sure that these kids leave here in 12th grade and can be productive, and not narrowly define what that is. And so that's one of the things that I think, you know, we're not going to be alone in that. In fact, we might actually be trailing a little bit.
Yeah, I think some of the good words that we've been using in Limbrook were life after high school, you know, and that life could be in all different directions as we see with our graduates. The last thing that I just want to mention for completeness sake, the last part of the slide here says that if you meet whatever the state sets as minimum requirements, the district has no right to hold a diploma from a student. So what does that mean here in Limbrook? Right now, we ask students to do community service that cannot be held against a student to keep them from graduating if they do not complete their community service. So there's something that, again, we can give out a seal or an endorsement for, you know, for doing above and beyond in different areas. The same would apply to the writing lab. Again, that is not something that's mandated by the state. So anything that's not mandated by the state cannot be mandated in order to obtain a Limbrook High School diploma.
So maybe a change might be when students apply for colleges, it might ask a question like, how many seals and what seals have you received from your school?
It's very possible. They could ask you that, they could ask you, what kind of micro-credentials have you earned? What were available? What did you earn? And yes, our profile may need a lot more detail than we've ever seen because of the fact that the, you know, opportunities are endless here.
Thank you, Dr. Bilekis. So that is why I thought it important to bring this to you. It's, we need to pay attention to this, and we, and I do think we are on the path, but we need to pay attention to this. So at that same meeting that we were all at, I did make a public comment that I do think it's ironic that this is being discussed at the same time that our state is reevaluating the way that it allocates aid. I may, it's curious to me. So I said it in different words that day, but it's curious to me. So the, I was just up at Saratoga, and we received the report or a preview of what the Rockefeller Institute is going to be presenting on December 1st. And I have real concerns as to whether mid-wealth districts like Limbrook will see any, you know, significant change to its foundation age. Time will tell, but I thought it is important, certain trends have to be brought to your attention now, and I'm going to ask Mr. Press to take a look at that.
Thank you, Dr. Lynch. So as, as Dr. Lynch had mentioned, and we'd mentioned this, I know he's mentioned this in the past, and we brought it up, I know, in the budget hearings, budget workshop in March. This fiscal cliff is, that we've been talking about for a number of years, is now upon us. And so what I wanted to do was focus on some of the more significant factors, and this is not a full-blown budget conversation, we're just beginning our budget process here in the district. But we wanted to just kind of set the stage for budget season with the board and then entertain any questions that you may have. So this first slide shows foundation aid that the district has received or will receive, going back to 2016, '17. And you can see very clearly the upward trend from the last three years, when the state decided finally to fully fund the foundation aid formula. So the district received considerable increases in foundation aid, as did most districts across Long Island. But if you notice, in '24, '25, our increase there started to look a lot like pre-pandemic levels of increase. So we received less than about 1% of foundation aid increase. It's our expectation that, as Dr. Lynch said, it's either going to be this or something worse potentially for a district like Limbrook, kind of district with around average wealth, with the stable to maybe slightly declining enrollment. So this is a concern for us because the foundation aid increases, and we'll talk about expenses in a few slides, have helped support.
Can I just ask a quick clarifying question? When you talk about wealth... When you talk about wealth?
Yes.
You're talking about property values, correct? Not necessarily income?
It's a combination, actually. There's different wealth ratios that the state uses. The most common one is the combined wealth ratio, which is a combination of property wealth and income.
So in a community like ours where, you know, property values have soared, but incomes have not necessarily soared, we may be seen as much wealthier than any of us feel we are?
Yes, yes. I mean, the ratio is our wealth, the information they use to, for wealth calculations here is combined against a state average. And that state average has gone up. Property values just have gone up considerably, probably more so down here on Long Island and more specifically Nassau County than they have upstate, in upstate New York. But there is, there is a comparison to a statewide average.
Could I just comment a little bit on the foundation aid? Because I just want to go, just because I have the history here at, in the seat. So you'll see Mr. Press has put up big bars at 2023, 24, up at, what is that? How many million that is? Fourteen?
Fourteen at the top, yeah.
We should have always been getting that. That's what the full funding of foundation aid should have been. So in essence, we have been funded for the last few years or decade below what foundation aid should have been given. The state had a large influx of money and they decided to finally fully fund foundation aid. I asked this question up in Saratoga and was told directly, there's probably going to be no intent to pay past harms. So even though we had been, and I'd say this community with that, you at one point chose not to go to the full levy because you got to see that windfall of foundation aid. We had almost, in that time period, we had almost negative tax caps where it was less than 1%. It was 0.34 at one point. And you continued to fund programs to this board's great credit. And you continued to build and add services, all recognizing that there was not fully funded at foundation aid. But now, when they increased that, voila, that is the fiscal cliff that you're looking at right there. It's because they rapidly increased us, did not let us reserve anymore, did not let the 4% go more than 4%, and therefore it creates a yellow light.
No question. Okay. Additionally, what I wanted to discuss with you as well was this interest in earnings that we've received over the last few years that have significantly helped to support the program. So back in the, in the early, okay, there we go, pre-pandemic, we saw interest income of around a half million in the year, 17, 18, a bit less. Then when the pandemic hit and the Federal Reserve lowered interest rates, our income dropped fairly precipitously. And then as the Federal Reserve reversed course and increased interest rates dramatically, the district was a beneficiary of a fairly significant amount of interest income on the funds that we have either in bank accounts or invested. As I'm sure you've heard, the Fed has started to decrease interest rates and from what I've heard, plans to do so over the next year and a half with totals decreases of around 2% in total over that period of time by the end of calendar year 2025. So this increase, this significant increase in revenue that we've seen over the last five years, I'm sorry, the last two years, is going to return and we're hopeful, at least that it stays at the level of half million. But we're, this year we received about $1.6 million to go back down to around half a million. That's a million dollars of a decrease in revenue that we're looking out for. So again, foundation aid kind of leveling out, potentially declining. We're seeing, we're going to see a decrease in our interest income as well.
Dr. Press, could I just ask you? Are you projecting foundation, foundation aid to decline or to stay at the current level into the upcoming year or two? Because I know you've said cliff.
Yeah.
Has there been a projection released yet?
There has not been a projection. The governor typically releases her budget proposal in January, around mid-January. But as Dr. Lynch said, the Rockefeller Foundation was tasked with looking at the foundation aid formula. I don't think they're going to present a formula that will be implemented for the 25, 26 school year because the governor's got to present a budget in mid-January, they're going to present in December. But given the, what the, what the state did last year in kind of playing around with the formula, we received, there had been in the past, this sort of, this do minimum increase. So most districts, if they weren't due an increase based on the formula, would get a 3% increase in their foundation aid. Last year, that went out the window. And so that is not there anymore. Hold harmless is still in the part of the conversation. They tried to take that away last year. It came back. You know, that could help us if they retain, hold harmless, then we would not lose money. But at this point, I don't think anyone has a solid grasp on what the state's going to do.
I think, I think we have to remember, though, that even if we're flat, it's really a loss because all of our expenses are still going up. We all have inflation, fuel, salaries, you know, supply, everything is going up in cost. So if we're having the same revenue from the state, it's really a loss.
Right. And so, and that's one of the things I was going to.
You're anticipating the next four slides.
Yeah, one, yeah. You're foreshadowing my future slides there, Mr. Murray.
But what Mr. Murray says really is the concern, right? I mean, putting it all in a nutshell, and you'll go into a lot more detail, more eloquently than any of us, but we have foundation aid at best leveling off when all of our expenses are going to be increasing, and some of them pretty significantly, and we're going to be losing money on our interest income, right? Because the funds that we have is sitting in the bank. If they're getting 4% this year to generate a million four, are going to get 2% or 3% next year and generate half of that. So we're going to really be having these things come together at the same time. Less interest income, which we use to pay expenses, less foundation aid relative to what we need, and surging costs. That's the district, that's what we're facing and went out alone. That's what the entire Long Island's going to be facing in a nutshell.
Yes, and that's why we wanted to just bring that to your attention. This is, in my conversations with Dr. Lynch, this is going, it's going to create an environment when we're budgeting that is different than what the district has experienced over the last, you know, decade or so. So we just wanted to put this out there. And we've had preliminary conversations with the administration about this as we start the budget process. So yes, so, you know, if, if foundation aid is going to be flat and we're losing revenue from interest and income, you know, interest on our funds, it's creating this concern and which actually segues into this slide here because this is our use of reserves and fund balance. And as you can see, we had to increase that significantly for the current fiscal year in order to offset, you know, we had to balance our revenues and our expenses. But with foundation aid not increasing, we had to make up that difference somehow. And we did that by using, appropriating more reserves and fund balance, which is essentially taking money out of our bank account to cover those expenses. The other part, and I didn't put it up here on the slide, but it ties into the conversation about interest income, is that as the, you know, the economy slows and, you know, we're, the Fed was decreasing interest rates because they felt that we had relatively controlled inflation. As inflation goes down, as we know, CPI affects our tax cap. And if we return to, to CPIs of lower than 2%, that puts additional pressure on our tax levy. And if we have no increase in the foundation aid, no increase, or smaller increases in the tax levy, again, I don't really mean to be the harbinger of doom and gloom here, but we just want to be kind of realistic with, with the conversation. So this level of, and I mentioned this in the budget hearings, this level of use of reserves and fund balance is not sustainable over the long term.
Sure. We, we increased and used the reserves and fund balance because we made certain changes, like hiring security and like, is that why we had such an?
You're, you're all just foreshadowing my conversation. This is great. You're doing my job for me. I love this. But yeah, in part. So actually, I mean, I'll just go. So the, on this slide, now we're talking about expenditures because in response, in part, in response to the pandemic and the social and emotional and mental health needs of our students, the district has added social workers and psychologists over the last few years. Those are the, actually, the top two lines on this graph. And you can see they've increased over time fairly significantly and toward the tail end of that even more so. Additionally, the district added its own security force a couple of years ago and that has caused an increase in expenses there as well. So we're providing for the, the social, emotional, mental health needs of our students, the physical safety of our students and our staff, and that, that comes at an expense.
Yeah, I just think this is, I did put some comment into the Rockefeller Institute. And I think it's important for society to understand, you're not looking to us to be schools anymore. You're asking us to be full-service family institutions. And when I was a teacher in the 1990s, there was maybe a half social worker somewhere in a corner of a school that maybe got consulted every now and again. This is now part and parcel of what we do. And when we look at the profile of the owl, the care for the mental health and social, emotional being of our children is a mandate from the community. So it's not like, oh, this was a great luxury that we did. This is what our kids need. And what I'm seeing is, you know, we actually had to bring the outside in. We had to bring Northwell into our environment to support us. Rather than in a former era, when we would point out and say, oh, you need to get your psychiatric care elsewhere, it has to come in. So I don't necessarily see these as optional. Yet I'm not so sure the foundation aid formula is acknowledging all the work that we do. Similarly, what we've done with security, I'm very proud of bringing our own force onboard. I feel, you know, I'm very proud, looking at, you know, I don't know if the kids like it, but you know, the fact that we're checking ID cards very differently. That comes at a cost to keep the children safe emotionally and physically. I don't know that those are optional costs anymore.
I agree. And, you know, we had a health and safety meeting just last week and our, the Homeland Security Liaison to the district said, the things we're doing here, very few, if any districts are doing what we're doing here in terms of health and safety. So I, you know, I think that's a good thing. But it, again, it comes at, at a cost. So again, not, we are, my goal here is not to say, this stuff has to go. My goal is to say, we did the right thing. We want to continue to do the right thing. We just have to figure out how to fund that. And we just wanted the board and the community to be aware of that. My next slide, again, this, I tried to fit these all on one slide because I tried to promise Dr. Lynch we'd just be three slides. But I couldn't do it, given the scale that we're looking at. So the bottom three lines are the social workers, the psychologists and the security. The top line here, this is our transportation costs. This, you know, again, fairly significant increase, just wanted to point this out. This is the result of a number of factors, including the addition of some out-of-district, non-public schools that we're transporting to more and more these days, but also increases in the market in transportation costs. So we had our largest provider tell us they were not renewing our contracts. So when we renew contracts, we can renew at CPI. CPI has been high over the last few years. That has contributed to some of the increase. But our largest provider that had been providing those renewals for years at CPI, you reach a point where they were so far below market that they said they couldn't sustain at that rate. Dr. Berman, she used her connections there to say, okay, don't, how about you only not renew? The vans, renew the buses. And we'll, so we're going to do, we're going to have to go out to bid on the buses for next year. But we had to go out to bid on the vans and the cost went up about 50%. 52% on the vans.
Five, two?
Five, two, yes. They were charging us in the $4,000 range for vans. The market, everyone else is charging about 8,000 or more for vans. So we had to, they had to kind of get their, their numbers up. So we're expecting the same thing to happen with the buses, hoping that maybe it doesn't come in that high. But again, market, the market is what the market is. And if we want to have this resource available to us, we want to make sure that they do kind of hang around. They've been very good to us. We've worked really well with them. I was, my previous district, we had some of these low-cost carriers go out of business because they maintained their prices too low for too long. And then the pandemic kind of wiped them out. So again, we're seeing significant increases in transportation.
Mr. Press?
Yes.
Could I ask you, when you talk about this 52% increase, what are we talking about in dollars? And how many vans would you have that information? I hadn't thought of that question earlier.
So off the top of my head.
Of course you have.
Just going to pull this out. So when we talk about the 52%, what happened was we were paying, say, for a van about $4,000. We're now paying anywhere between seven and eight for that same van. So that's where you can see the cost a little bit more than double. It was vans and all small vehicles instead of, as Dr., as Mr. Press said, to do our entire fleet. With, with doing that, that's where we see the 52%. Looking at the upcoming year, we know that there's going to be another increase with buses. So we need to go out this year for buses and for matrons. And I would anticipate, so just to give you a different idea too, sometimes independent, our current carrier, might not be able to meet all of our needs. So I do have to bid with either our quadrant, which is a local bid that goes out with several neighboring districts, or there's a bigger bid that goes out, that's a larger span in Nassau County. And when those bids come back to me, I can look at a van costing anywhere between 10 and $12,000. Because now I'm asking for a specialty van that's not part of my original bid. And looking at that versus what we're currently paying right now, we still are paying significantly lower than what most districts are paying for those same vehicles.
And is that 8,000 or 12,000, as it might be? Is that for the year, for the route?
Per month.
Thank you.
Kind of a related question with, with increases. How much, and you might not know, you might have to get back to me next, next time. I didn't think to ask ahead of time. How much of an increase have we seen with McKinney-Vento qualifying students? And what specific transportation costs are related to those federal obligations that are also unfunded?
So we are seeing our numbers in the double digits now, where over the past earlier years, we were in the single digits. But we're not more than 20, I can tell you that. But when I look at transportation, not all of the families either require transportation or, or ask for transportation. But for those families that are requiring, I can tell you that I have at least two bus, two vans that have been reassigned to be able to help provide that support. So that's in addition to our regular in-district and non-public and special education routes.
I have a question. Have we ever looked into purchasing our own buses?
So we did look at it a few years ago to kind of get a sense. It was actually right around the COVID time and right after that, to kind of get a better sense of what those costs would be. The numbers now would be very different than what we originally looked at. But we would, we were looking at the cost of the individual vehicles, the number of vehicles we would need, the staffing we would need to support it, the location of where those buses would have to be housed, the mechanics to be able to help maintain those buses, the training and licensing that has to be maintained and that's not just the drivers. It's also going to be the matrons and/or the nurses that are, that need to be on the buses. So there is a big cost that's involved in it. But what the specific numbers would be for right now, I would not have that.
I feel like initially, it's probably a big cost. But did you ever look like long-term, after you make your purchases, does it kind of decrease over time because now you have the buses?
It's a good question, yeah. So that, so over time, you would look to, you would anticipate to see a decrease. anticipate to see a decrease in the costs because of your initial purchase. So you would see that difference. However, after a certain period of time, you have the maintenance of the vehicles. So the, you would see another cost for maintaining those vehicles or having to recycle vehicles out after a certain number of years.
Would it be fair to say it's not likely to be a significant savings when you consider how few districts in Nassau County own their own buses?
It's a very good possibility. And then the other thing to consider, too, is that we would need to be looking at electric buses instead of the traditional buses that we have. So then there are other levels of information that we need to look at insofar as the housing of the, the electric for the buses, and distance, how far certain buses would be able to go. So there are different types of vehicles that you would need to be able to support different distances.
And that's an interesting point, because with this electric bus mandate, I, to be honest with you, I barely paid attention to it, because we don't own our own buses. All my colleagues upstate are up in arms, and you're like, yeah, that's a horrible thing. But when you start to talk about it now, the difference, I think we were looking at it, you know, an electric bus can be $300,000 apiece, and then the infrastructure that has to be there. And that's a mandate, by the way, all school fleets must convert to electric. That's what I'm talking about. That is a, that is a state mandate, so that's part of the.
That's existing, the mandate?
That, that's, it is a phase-in period.
So when we're bidding on a bus, like, those companies also as well have to change their entire fleet?
Yes.
So I'm assuming, because they have to do that, they're just gonna continue to increase what they're gonna charge us, because they have to change their fleet, right?
Yep.
Correct.
Correct. So there are ways of looking at it, that we may now join the legislative assault on this one. There are a bunch of people having this conversation. An interesting offset here, though, is that when you purchase fleets, there, you can, you can, you take on, we would take on more debt. That would positively affect the tax caps, but we're taking on more debt, you know. So it's kind of like, which, and then there is aid. So there's a revenue side that can also come in there, but.
Well, the tax cap's a doublage, sort of. It lets us raise our revenue, but only by taxing the community, right?
Correct, correct, exactly. It's, it's, it's a, exactly. Which ID want to take the poison in at that point?
Dr. Berman, would there be an insurance change in, in cost, owning our own buses?
There would be. What the cost would be, I don't know, but there would be a cost to that.
Right. So I mean, I would imagine it'd be significantly more.
Yes.
And has it ever been looked at, like, sharing, purchasing buses with another community and sharing?
So that is, I, you know, we met with the, so Nassau County is divided into four quadrants, and we're called the Southwest Quad. And we had a robust discussion about this at our last meeting, because we are not alone in this one. And actually, we're probably in the best shape of, as Dr. Berman was talking about, because of our working relationship with Independent. But there are some people in really bad trouble right now. So properly sharing resources amongst common districts would be, you know, we kind of have a structure for that, that we work with, how well it's been working, we kind of all have our doubts. So maybe it's something that the quadrant needs to look at.
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna follow up on that, too, not necessarily in terms of purchasing buses, but in terms of, one of the factors that's driving the increase in transportation costs is we have more kids going to private schools. And it's not like they're all going to one school. We have a lot of private schools where we have one kid going to a school, whether it's in Queens or Brooklyn, that kid gets his own, or her own bus. Have we looked into pairing with other schools in our quadrant to try to say, okay, we have a kid going to the ABC school, does anyone else local have it, and seeing if there's a way to try to share services and share the cost to those individuals? Because it sounds like, you know, next year, we're gonna have some really tough decisions to make, and we're gonna have to start scrouching the couch cushions for every dollar we can find, you know. And before we go out to the community with higher taxes, these are things I think we should all be trying to be creative in looking into. Have we, has anyone had those dialogues yet, or we're not there yet?
So within our quadrant area, we do have those conversations. We'll share our lists of schools that we're sending children to, and the number of children that we have, to be able to see if there's something that would work. And we do try and keep it to the local area, because there was one year that we did pair up with BOCs, and it was not as successful as we would have liked it to have been, because there were too many districts from too many faraway locations that caused our children to be on buses for an extended period of time, which was not acceptable. So we pulled back from that. But when we talk to our, our local people, just to see who has children that are going to schools, like you said, the singletons, or two or three that go, we do try and do that, where we piggyback possibly off of each other's contracts, or research a particular contract, and then have other districts work together with us. Also, within our routing, just so that you're aware, too, we look at all of our, what we call the singletons, when there's only one student that's on a bus, or two or three. And we look at all of the different start times, end times, and the locations of all of those schools. So we do have some routes that will have two and three of those non-public or special education programs clustered together, trying to keep the children on the bus no more than an hour, depending on traffic. And, but there are those rare occasions where we may have a particular student who's, who's only going on that bus by themselves, because nothing else fits.
Right.
But those are the ones that we try and reach out even more to, other districts, to kind of work together.
Thank you. Okay. And just a couple more points on that, because on the transportation part, I did go up to Albany with our state group, the ASBO, the Business Officials Group, to have conversations with the state about the electric mandate, because the conversation down here is that LIPA is not equipped for us all to have
Seriously?
Bus, you know, charging buses on, on our property. And in some cases, districts would need additional transformers in order to get enough power to charge their buses. And LIPA has said, well, you have to pay for that. In some districts, it was a million dollars. So again, another cost for this mandate from the state that may or may not have been fully thought through. We'll just leave it there.
At a minimum, it hasn't been fully funded.
Correct. And just this last.
So it's unfunded and unthought out, okay?
Again, this is including the previous slides, but given the scale, you could see that the, if I was trying to show the effect of the earlier expenses, it doesn't really show as well on this slide. But the top line here are our special education expenses over the last few years. Again, not to say, I'm not saying we need to cut any of these services, that I'm not trying to point a finger at anyone, I'm just trying to point out where we're seeing large increases in expenses, due in part to the classification of additional students, the increased services that a lot of these students need, and just the increased cost of the services that these students need. And it's often very challenging for us to find providers to provide the service, and so the market rates for these contracted services have gone up. We've tried to address that by bringing in, in some cases, our own occupational therapists, so that we're not dependent on the whims of the contractors. But our expenses here have gone up considerably. So just wanted to point that out. Question, Mr. Murray?
I had, I had a question, specific to special education. I know that one of the biggest line item expenses for special education would be our tuition payments to BOCs and other private settings that we need to send our more significantly challenged students to. I also know that those seats are getting harder and harder for any district to find, because there's just a limited number of them. Might we be in a position to create those programs that we're currently paying to send students to here, and potentially actually turn what was an expense into a revenue stream by being able to offer extra seats to districts who can't find placements?
I mean, that, it is interesting to note, so one of the things you addressed last January in your work session was the creating the, the centers at West End and at North, so that kids could be fully diplomed. So that was a step in that direction. There is no doubt that we are keeping kids home who we formerly would have sent out. We now have a full cadre of aides who are trained to, to, for basic hygiene, which never would have been a Lindbrook thing. We now have aides that handle that. We have aides who are trained to deal with behavioral problems. That's a new Lindbrook thing. You're now talking about, yes, other things that we might be able to do, and then tuition kids in, certainly a possibility. And you want to talk, yes, Dr.?
Sure, if you'd like. So again, you know, as Dr. Lynch said, we have different programs than we've ever had. We've also had opportunities where we have brought in students from other districts. Unfortunately, when our needs grow, though, we can't tuition students in when we're filling the rooms. So that is something that has been a consideration. When we do talk about budgets, we do talk about whether or not there are, you know, positions that we can bring other students to fill. So that is always part of a conversation. And it really depends on the kids' needs, because there are certain levels of need that even if we do cer, little adjustments, we're never gonna be able to create the therapeutic settings that certain children need, because they are in these places, because they are high cost. And there are a lot of things, like you said about shared services, you know, we're not going to have that same type of facility that, you know, and again, we have a limited number of classroom spaces, and some people have the most beautiful sensory gyms in places that, you know, deal with kids with very severe needs, you know, all the time. We're not gonna be able to reach those type of levels.
Dr. Belekis, or Dr., Mr. Press, could you speak to the IEP, and how we have to provide the services, and how those services are funded, you know, not of our own piggy bank, so to speak, but any type of federal or state funding we get to provide for the special education mandates?
We do, so, we do receive aid for special education, for services, above a certain amount. There's a certain expectation of the district will cover a certain amount of the expenses. When the students become high cost, then we do receive aid for that. And the aid comes in the subsequent year, so we have to front the expense, you know, upfront. We do receive grant funding through the IDEA. That helps cover some of our special education costs as well. So those are, I mean, two sources of revenue.
So the, one of the bright lights I heard up from the state was that they recognize the increasing cost of special education. They may look to, that is not part of foundation aid, but they may look at that with a separate lens.
Okay. So could you speak to then, so where we have nearly $16 million, is that including or excluding the aid that comes in?
This is just on the expense side.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. And just on the IDEA as well, you know, it's sort of common for the government. The funding we receive, the funding that all districts receive through the IDEA grants is not what it should be, and not what apparently was promised when the IDEA was put into place. They've never funded it to the level that it was anticipated to be funded. So it's another one of those, oh, foundation aid, here's a, here's a foundation aid formula, and we're not going to fund it. I, in my mind, it's similar with the IDEA.
And just another issue on the IDEA side, there is a federal requirement, and it's called supplement, not supplant. So the local government, you, have to pay for everything that is essential to the education program. And anything coming through the federal funds cannot supplant that which the local government needs to form. And in fact, there is a calculator called a maintenance of effort calculator, that we are audited on every year, that has to prove that your local share is continuing at the proper pace, so as not to mix that lineup. So it's just a, another quirk.
So that was, I mean, that was the extent of the presentation that we wanted to make. Again, it's, it's not comprehensive, but we wanted to just point out some of the key challenges that we're facing as we enter into budget season. So if there are any other questions, be happy to entertain them.
You know, obviously, the expenditures are gonna keep going where they're going. And, or have we looked at any, like, energy conservation projects, or things like that, where we might be able to reduce in the areas we can reduce? And, and I know it's sort of an investment upfront, but like, you know, what do we have kind of on the, on the burner for, as far as reducing those kinds of costs that we can control? A lot of these costs are completely out of our control, but some costs we can control.
Yes. So we have, Mr. Seda and I, we did have conversations about this. We met with the energy company, which does energy performance contracts. That's their, their main thing. Energy performance contracts are ways to get work that is, that will enhance energy efficiencies, and to sort of fund that in the way we fund capital projects over a period of years. So we looked into that. Mr. Seda actually is, has started attending a program through PSEG. It's actually, it's a free program. It's incredibly comprehensive. The first session was two full days. Part of the focus of that program is on energy efficiency. So we, we will have conversations about that. I actually, when I went to my organization's conference in June, I sat on a, in an inn on a panel that talked about a district upstate that really focused on trying to find energy efficiencies. They actually paid a stipend to a teacher, and this teacher was, he would come in after school and just observe what things are still on, that don't need to be on. And they've worked around trying to find ways to save costs that way. I think one of the bigger cost savings that we, when I spoke with Mr. Seda, that we talked about, was putting in a building management system throughout the district. What that would do would allow us to control better heating, ventilation, air conditioning, things of that nature. So once I, when we started having the conversation about this presentation, I called Mr. Seda, and I said, you and I, we need to have a conversation about trying to find savings through energy efficiency. So it is a topic, you know, at the top of mind. I will continue to have conversations with Mr. Seda, and try to come up with a more comprehensive plan that we can present to the board that way. But right at the moment, there's nothing concrete, but we have thoughts that we've been kind of toying around with, again, the building management system. Mr. Seda and his crew do go through the district on a regular basis, replacing the older lights with LED lights. That's a, it's a big savings there, one light at a time, but eventually it does add up.
Thank you. And then my other question goes back to Dr. Belekis's part with the curriculum and the shifts. As we're thinking about the kinds of additional credentials or seals that students might graduate with, can you tell us where we're at with the AP Capstone program and diploma? I know that was something we talked about, actually, it's been a couple of years now, and I was just wondering where we are with the possibility of bringing in that robust program for our students?
Sure. So that is something that we've been discussing, and hopefully, we'll have something to present to you at budget time, that basically, the target implementation on that would be for next school year, so for the '25, '26 school year.
Dr. Belekis, may I ask one other question? You had mentioned earlier in your presentation that with the new micro-credentialing and such, that there would be a financial impact to the district. Do you have any vision of where the costs are gonna take us with all of what Mr. Press just said?
I hate to say this, right now, I can't give you a definitive answer, but I think once we hear from the State Department, whether that's, you know, November, as they say, or shortly after, I think we can start formulating plans and having dollar amounts attached to it, because we do know every program that we bring in, you know, if you want to give a student a micro-credential, well, you need a faculty member who's able to grant that micro-credential. And I'll give you an example. So Mr. Jewesman offers a credential in SolidWorks. In order to offer that credential in SolidWorks, Mr. Jewesman needed, before he even started working for the Lindbrook School District, I give him credit, on his own time in August, he went out and became a SolidWorks trainer. So in order for our kids to receive that credential, their teacher needed to be able to be able to grant that credential. So that is a cost around, you know, a program. And again, when you have a program like that, and there's hands-on components, well, you need to own those components. And thankfully, we have a beautiful facility in the new wing for our technology program that he inherited from his predecessor, which was wonderful. But again, if we're bringing in new stuff, that, those costs can go in all different directions, and I think we're gonna need to see what the groundwork looks like from the state, and then start building.
Any other questions from the board? So, I think you saw why it was important to meet, because we need to get ahead of this, just like the graduation requirements, now is the time. It would be really improper to have this conversation in March. Now's the time, what can we start to do now? The legislators are out and about, they are well out and about, because it's, it's an important year. So, this is the time when we should be talking to our Assemblymen and to our, to our, to our state senator. Those are the ones who can speak on our behalf up at the legislature. What else can we do? We need to let, we need to bond with other similar boards who are in the same shape as us, mid-wealth districts who are probably not going to see the benefit of foundation aid. We need to hear our voices to be heard, we need to get ahead of this. I hate to say, we need to be proactive before the budget hits. What's our Plan A, B, and C? There are choices, hard choices, to be made on the revenue side, and there are harder choices to be made on the expenditure side. So, to be prepared to think of what that might look like, it could happen, I hope I am Chicken Little, and the sky is falling tonight, and you can all, I, I will happily let you laugh at me in March and say, "Ah, we always knew it was gonna be okay." I just don't think it's gonna be okay. We're gonna have to make some, some, some choices and what, what, what you may want to do with that, so.
Is this something that will be discussed with PTAs as well?
Most cer- yeah, so we, we'll be meeting with PTA, absolutely. I think they, they are probably our best people to help us deal with that. And on that note, let's not end on a womp-womp, let's end on a good note. Speaking of PTA, the Lindbergh Council of PTAs has revived the fly with the owl, so it's been a few years since we've had this one, so it's gonna be a great homecoming weekend, a truly great homecoming weekend. So, we have Homecoming on October 26, which is a Saturday, replete with the parade and the game, and then on the 27th, there will be the Fun Run, starting up at North, there'll be a Kids Fun Run at 8:00 AM, the 8:30 Fun, 5K will start, in my case, it will be a 5K Walk, so I invite all of you who are not into running to join me with the 5K Walk. It is up on the website right now, it's on Facebook, so right now, get your Early Bird for $33.80, the price goes up to $38.98 on October 6, and race day goes all the way up to $44.15. Also, I'd ask you to know any people who want to do business sponsorships, reach out to your contacts, we, I talked, we've, Mr. Press has talked to some of our vendors on behalf of PTA, but there might be people in the local community who'd wanna take a great sponsorship event, so I think it's gonna be a great day, a true great day in owldom, so that'll be a, a good thing to have.
And if I could add to that, just to clarify, this is the PTA Council Scholarship fundraiser, right? So, all of this money really goes back to our graduates.
Yep, absolutely, so this is the, this is the event.
And as long as we're plugging fun things going on in the district, October 19th, it's a little early because of Homecoming, we have our National Art Honor Society's Night of, Night of the Pumpkins, and that's a really great thing to come to for children of, of all ages, so I invite you to come do that also.
Back to you, Mr. Belmont.
So, womp-womp, thank you, Dr. Lynch, just wanted to know what that would sound like. So, obviously, we go through this every year, but in every year, we get more concerned with how bad the storm clouds will be, so we appreciate this update and the work Mr. Press put into that, and Beletas with the, obviously, two changes here, coming at the same time, the curriculum issues that are coming up, but obviously, the financial ones have always been an issue for us, we haven't really talked much about the tax cap, but we'll, we'll save that to see what comes over the next few months, so we appreciate any updates we hear from, obviously, you know, communicating it with our legislators like we always do will be very important, and we will see what comes up, so appreciate that. Our next meeting will be October 9th here in the cafeteria, appreciate it. Thank you all for coming out tonight, hopefully you all were able to see the screen and, and pay attention to what was going on, and that's it. Night, night.